January 21st, meeting to order. The first item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda. Hopefully everyone had an opportunity to read through the minutes.
Yes.
And all the other attachments?
Yes.
And so someone is hopping to the opportunity?
I vote to accept the consent agenda and...
So you're making a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'm making a motion to accept.
Yep.
One second.
Okay.
Oh, I think yeah.
Consent agenda.
That's the warrant.
That's the warrant.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda?
Aye.
Okay, welcome and invitation to speak. I do not believe we have any visitors here this evening.
No, Liz Reed will be coming up to talk to us about the McMillan boycott. About, I told her about 20 of.
Okay.
And we'll move right on to that one at that time. I handed out something that we bought today from Sarah Sloman in Brookline. The Reader's First, the Reader's First, right. And she will describe it to you. I decided rather than to send it to you, because some of you wouldn't be reading your email in time and whatnot, that I would just print it out for you. And Liz will have an analysis of this for you.
Okay.
We'll wait until that time.
Okay, so we'll welcome her at that point. The warrant is circulating for signatures. In addition, we have several members who are working on collecting their signatures to get on the ballot for the April election. And those signatures are also circulating. Hopefully those of you who are watching us on camera will get an opportunity to help get some names onto that ballot.
No.
No.
She moved out of Norwood.
Oh.
Yeah. Correspondence.
Well, we have the two pieces of correspondence. One was all the thank you letters that we wrote to the Simoni Foundation. And the other was the Ask Me, Council 93 Request for Information. I only meant to send the letter, I sent the entire packet. There were a few errors on that, some old information.
But you had adjusted the...
Yeah, people had been promoted since, yeah, we had that database. And so we've corrected all of those and sent them off.
Okay.
And as Sarah knows, they have requested dates from us and came up with one date. We aren't really sure, we have not heard anything about whether that meeting will occur between the town and the board and the union.
Can you tell us what the date was?
The date that may be the negotiation, or the start of negotiations, is Friday, February 7th. And I, apparently, everyone in my family does not record things on the calendar to let me know if there are conflicts with dates. And so I said, "I will make it work." And I am unable to make it work because I need to be picking someone up from the airport shortly into when the negotiations would be starting on that Friday. So we don't know right now. We are hoping that the negotiations start at 10:30 on Friday, the 7th of February. I have two members of the personal subcommittee here. I'm hoping that...
I will be able to attend.
You would be able to attend?
I would as well, so.
Okay.
We gave them quite a few dates and they...
We gave them some pretty wide windows.
Right.
So it may be that that's not the date that works for HR and Tony Mazuko and the union and whatnot. And we'll find out from there. But as soon as I started looking at things today, I went, "Yes, that's too tight of a fit." But hopefully we'll get that started and we'll get the contract settled with favorable terms for both sides. And I am optimistic.
Yes, so we don't know whether we'll have anything on the ballot.
They're not correct. The Simoni Foundation, again, you all read in your packet, that the Simoni Foundation did choose to donate a substantial contribution again towards our literacy program and we have thanked them appropriately.
And thanks to Stuart Plummer, actually. He knows, he knows we appreciate him and he enjoys being the person to do this for us, so it's great.
And we are greatly appreciative. The next item on Old Business is the microfilm reader. We will table that until Ms. Reed gets here unless there's more to speak before she... Oh, yeah, she's not involved with that.
No, she's not involved with that. Now I'll update you. But did anybody have any comments on the budget update? Any questions or anything like that?
No, thank you so much.
Charlotte, I don't have a copy of the agenda.
Oh.
I have the board packet.
I know.
And I noticed George doesn't either. I would have brought mine from home, but I didn't.
Yeah. I know, you know what I did? I made you copies of the board packet instead. Yeah, that'd be great, maybe, thank you.
How many do I have?
I'm just working from the iPad.
We need about eight.
Yeah, I got it on the iPad.
I grabbed the first page off and made the first page, forgot the agenda.
At least you still have it in your printer this evening.
Yeah, exactly, I know. Well, at least one of our printers. So John, did you have a question?
Yeah, just, I noted the several items where we were already at over 100 percent. I just thought a comment on each of them might be...
Oh, so you're talking about the actual budget?
The actual budget.
And not the budget update that was a little...
No.
That was very wordy. Well, I usually, I have those and most of those are in the, you probably noticed, they have a kind of a salmon highlight on them.
Yes.
So the computer software, which is really our subscriptions, is very overspent, partly because some of them were paid for the entire year. But we are finding that because of our marketing and all the other things that we're doing, all the tracking that we're doing and Lydia is doing with the transactions, the reference transactions, that we are spending more, but we want to spend from that line item so that we can know what we're spending. Because if we were to go to spend it from state aid, we would know at the bottom line over, the right-hand line would be total spend. We know we spent that much money. But I think it's important to have that in the budget. So we'll be going over on that by the end of the year. Dues and conferences, the same thing, although we will stop spending from that because many of the staff are going to conferences, which is wonderful. We never, not only did we not have the interest, but we didn't have the funds as well. And now what I think we need to do is we need to figure out how to find the funds in the future to make sure that all of our staff can go to the conferences. Most of those are paid with the exception of MLA. I think most of the PLA stuff has already been, we've already expensed a lot of that. The other would be the 100 percent for programs. The reason for that is then we spend from the library budget for the first half of the year and then in January, we're funded by the Friends. And the Friends will, pretty much, a lot of the programming funds, expenses will come from the Friends for the next six months. Materials in electronic format. As you know, we're spending more and more and more every single year, materials in electronic format. And so we're revising our expenditures and buying less in print and less in physical materials and more in the e-format, because that's what our patrons are wanting. And Minuteman, of course, is all spent upfront to begin with, so.
And again, for the sake of some of our newer board members, when it comes to the different major items here, salaries as an umbrella needs to stay within the salaries budget. And the same is true with incidentals. So if one of the line items within incidentals is above what we requested from the town, our bottom line is that the total of incidentals fit within the incidentals budget. So there may be some line items that don't get as much spent out of them. There may be some line items where we fill in from state aid or the revolving fund, depending on its applicability. But having one line item itself...
Thank you.
...in the salmon color of this budget is not a cause for concern. If there are too many of them that are spent over their expected amounts, then we need to start taking a look a little bit more closely at how things are going.
We will be, but I just received, where do we go tonight? Oh, okay. At the department head meeting this morning at Town Hall, we received instructions to get our budget together. And we've been asked to level fund incidentals. And only for salaries, you know, include step raises and not COLA yet because nothing has been negotiated. And what I probably will do is move some items around, things that we can spend more from revolving and state aid and make sure that computer software and a couple of these others, dues and conferences, for instance. We have had a meager dues and conferences budget for the past decade. We've slowly been increasing it. But it is, for as many professionals and as many people who we have wanting to make use of conferences and professional development, it's really been, it's sort of been tragic that we haven't had that money. And so I think what we need to do is beef that up.
Could I have a follow-up question? I sort of, I've developed this model in my head of which of those things are worrisome and which are not. Start with the ones where, because they're annual, we pretty much spent all we're going to spend, so if it's at 100 percent, no big deal, and you had a couple of those. Either our money has been spent or all the money that will be spent has been spent. The second thing is things where there's a natural balancing account, like the materials in electronic format. It's materials overall that we really want to keep within the budget. And we have that and we have the third option, which is the state aid and the other revolving funds. So the only one that I'm left with to wonder about is dues and conferences and some of the programming. And that's where I figure you may wind up needing to identify things where you can come in under budget in order to make everything add up. And is it way too early to be thinking about what those might be?
Yes, I think it is.
Okay, that's fine.
Right, right. Mainly because we know that we can spend from dues and conferences. We have money in state aid. We've always spent money from state aid, from gifts, and now from the revolving fund for the overages in all of those budgets. And what I'm trying to do is track it more within our municipal budget to make sure that we know what we're spending and that the town knows what we need to spend on our staff. You know, those lean years were very, very lean and we had basically nothing for dues and conferences. And I think it's, you know, important now to make that part of our municipal budget and not to always go for state aid. We do spend, what is it, Lydia, this year? I think we have to spend about $30,000 from revolving and state aid for materials that isn't funded by the town. So, and we've always done that. We've always had a big chunk that has to be paid that way. And that's what those funds are for.
Right.
And you also received a handout tonight that I brought from my Public Relations Advisory Committee of the MBLC, which is all about local aid to public libraries, which tells you that other libraries do, all do the same thing. What do they spend their state aid for? And there's some great quotes in there as to what you spend it on.
Okay.
Did the library benefit from the override?
The entire town benefited from the override in that we did not have to cut our budgets.
So you didn't get more money, but you didn't have to cut?
Right. Right. Last year, you know, we always get more in salaries. We level funded our incidental budget last year as well. So, but we're, as Sarah knows, from 2008, we are in substantially better condition than we were back then and then during the recession when we were really struggling.
Because of the override?
No, 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 because of the fact that we just, you know, we weren't funded. And we've just, you know, our revolving fund and we're getting more state aid again, which is one of the, on the legislative agenda this year for the state. They're asking for an increase to state aid to public libraries. So we're hoping that that number will ease and go up. We went, we were, for a while, receiving only $28,000 and we're back up to 40, so we're hoping, well, we're back up to 37. Hoping to get above 40 again. It's important to every library, even the big ones, Cambridge, Boston, they really rely on their state aid. Mr. Hall?
There was a lot of end-of-year jogging to get the state's contribution to the community preservation committees raised. And this has me thinking, if there's going to be an active discussion about the level of state aid to libraries, is there an independent, non-town employee person or group, like Friends and the Library, who might send in a supportive letter for the legislation when and if that is appropriate?
Well, we, Library Legislative Day, which is April 2nd, and Lydia and I are going and Brian DeFelese will go again, and I've invited other staff to go. And last year, we had a meeting with Senator Rush for at least an hour, and he was incredibly supportive. He and John Rogers are both on the Library Legislative Committee, which is a small percentage of our legislators. So it's nice to know that our senator and representative here in Norwood are both really big library fans. So we've, in fact, today I sent out letters to both Senator Rush and Representative Rogers asking them to please make an appointment with us so that we can come and visit them on April 2nd. So that's the big advocacy day. And any trustee is more than welcome to come. If anybody's wanting, wants to come, we could all go up together, which, we really felt that the presence we had in Senator Rush's office was amazing. I mean, he, there were five, four of us, five of us? I can't remember.
Carla, Kucian.
Yeah, there were five of us. Five of us, which was really, I think, very impressive for him to have, and he was very excited about library services. And so that's, that's the advocacy that we do. I mean, we're advocating all year long, but that's the big day.
What date did you say that is?
That's April 2nd, Thursday.
Thursday.
And it's all day, pretty much all day at State House. It starts about 9:30. And we have a lunch. There's a library showcase. We have briefings. And then we go down to visit our legislators. So that's, that's the day that is important, even though we're doing it all year long. So that would be good if any trustees wanted to go. Years ago, Helen Weish from the Friends went with me, way back in like 2009, so.
Where do you park?
I, we don't. We take the train. Take the commuter rail.
And then the T.
And then the T.
To Park Street.
We go to South Station, then we get on the red line, and then we get up to Park Street. Yeah, walk into the State House. It's a day and it's kind of tiring, but it's, well, I go, well, I was on the legislative committee for several years, so co-chaired it, but the chairman not, so. So that's the time, John, that's really, yeah.
Sounds great.
So we kind of took a little detour from our path here.
But Liz is back.
But Liz is back.
Liz is here.
Did we finish the discussion on the microfilm?
The microfilm reader is that Brian has ordered a Dell computer to go along with this, this equipment. And there was a backlog after Christmas. Dell had a backlog, but he, I believe it's supposed to be in Friday? And he'll be getting that all put together, yeah, all the other equipments here.
Okay. And that's still fitting under the cap that we had set for the whole system?
Oh, yeah.
Excellent. Macmillan Publishers embargo and library boycott. Ms. Reed? Take the floor.
Just want to share over the stage. So in the last couple of months, I know that Charlotte and Lydia and everybody have been sending lots of different articles and updates and food for thought to folks. I think at current count, there are 79 libraries across the country that are boycotting. And the total population served by those libraries would equal, I think, what California and New York City added together.
So those are individual libraries, not library systems?
Oh, sorry, library systems and consortia.
Okay.
I had sent that link out a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, thank you.
And some of them were very big, very big systems.
So that's actually 1,163 individual libraries.
Okay.
How many in Massachusetts?
Massachusetts has been a little bit slow to the, to the party. It started out with just Brookline and Dedham and earlier, I think right before the weekend, the entire Merrimack Valley decided to boycott.
Which is just like Minuteman, except for it's Merrimack. And I don't know how many libraries are in that consortium.
Fairly comparable to us, I feel like, but not positive. So that's north of Boston and over a little bit, basically. I know the other Minuteman libraries have been talking about it. I went to the network meeting last week and sort of the feeling that people were bringing to that meeting, different directors and such, was that different boards of trustees have also been talking about it. But there are a lot, there's a lot of indecision. People are not quite sure what to do about it and what to think or feel about it. So it looks like, yeah, MBLC is very close to us at 36 members, so just below us for Does anybody have any questions, I guess, at this point? Because we did go over a lot last time about what a boycott would mean for Norwood. I double-checked our numbers again earlier today. Macmillan circulation for ebooks is still only about 4 percent of our circulation over the last 10 years, which only is about 1,600 checkouts for the last 10 years for our patrons. Last time I submitted an ebook order for Norwood that was just for our Norwood patrons, I didn't buy any Macmillan, not because of a boycott, but just because none of our patrons have been wanting Macmillan stuff lately. So they wanted other materials from other publishers. I don't think an impact, the boycott for the town of Norwood would have a very big impact in terms of our patrons not being able to access things. You know, Leanne Moriarty might write another book in the next month, but, and I also don't think that Norwood boycotting would make a big bottom-line impact on Macmillan for our town purchases. It's more of a, I don't want to say symbolic because there is a financial aspect to it, but it really is more like this, another library to the list in terms of Norwood.
Ms. Hall?
I think Donna was up first.
Ms. Montgomery.
Was it a race to? All right. Well, I just have talked to a few people about this, because I think it's kind of outrageous behavior on Macmillan's part. And I've probably been preaching to the choir, but everybody I talked to said, "Oh, you should boycott them." So that was my first instinct, anyway.
Mr. Hall?
Mine is more a ripple effects question.
Okay.
Suppose we boycott and so we have less of this sort of thing. But other libraries in the Minuteman network might have them. If we have a patron who comes in and they find out that there's something that's an ebook from Macmillan that they like to get and we don't have it, but another library has, is there any danger you can see that the Minuteman system will say, "Well, you don't get to have a boycott" and then evade its effects on your own patrons?
No, that, so, Macmillan's already made that choice for us. Because right now, our patrons, if they want an ebook, this Macmillan, they can only access it if we purchase a copy or if the Minuteman group, the digital content working group purchases a copy. If Cambridge has purchased a copy, our patrons will never have access to it, period, at this point. And that's...
And that's Macmillan's.
And that's Macmillan's restriction.
Okay.
Which, from a staff budgeting point of view, was another thing that I thought of. Not that this should be the bottom line, it really should be about the patrons, but in terms of our funding and what we can spend money on and what we can't spend money on, there are certain budget lines that we cannot spend towards Macmillan because these budget lines are required to be shareable content. And Macmillan content is no longer shareable. It has caused a budgeting nightmare for the digital content group and ordering stuff going forward. It's a lot of steps to ordering e-content now and how we can allocate invoices and that sort of thing. So for your question, there's not going to be a repercussion in terms of, "Oh, you're boycotting, so we're not going to give your patron stuff." Macmillan already is not giving our patron stuff. So that, we're already there.
Yeah, the restrictions were put in place and that's what started the boycott to begin with.
Yes.
So Liz has been tracking this and even though there haven't actually been any purchases or specific decisions not to purchase because there hasn't been the demand, but we had discussed it and Liz was planning on tracking it. On one hand, for the purpose of this conversation and seeing, you know, how it played out in our library. But the second reason would be because Liz would have to put, place separate orders for just those Macmillan items. And then technical services would have to process those invoices. Casey would have to process those invoices all separately because of the fact that it doesn't, it wouldn't count for standing.
Wouldn't count for our materials expenditure requirement because they're not shareable.
Yeah, a rare, a rare item that we're purchasing that we're not willing to share outside of Norwood.
If we imagine that we're trying to describe to our patrons and the press and the like what it is we're doing, would it be a fair statement to say, "We're not formally boycotting, but we haven't bought anything from them in quite a while. Our patrons aren't asking for it and right now we don't expect that to change."
Well, if Leanne Moriarty did come out with a book next month, that wouldn't be so true because they would be asking...
Hank Philippi Ryan is another, she's, and she's a local popular author of mysteries.
Yes.
She's, so this was interesting. I was in a conversation with the director of Brookline a few days ago and she was talking about having a conversation with her board. Hank Philippi Ryan is on their board. She, and she's a Macmillan ebook author. She had no idea. I think that Macmillan authors don't realize that this is even going on to a big extent. And she's at libraries! So.
Interesting.
And they voted to boycott.
Is Hank Philippi Ryan still a working reporter, too?
I think so, yes.
Because, connect the dots there. Now that she's learned about this, I wonder if she'd interest her colleagues in doing a more broadly available study.
Well, there was an NPR piece about it not too long ago.
Yeah, WBUR, so that was local. And there has been a lot of press. There's been a lot of, I think this...
There has been a lot of press about it. Yeah, the last Macmillan purchase I made, I think, was in October. That's the last time I bought Macmillan ebooks for Norwood patrons. And that's simply because of demand. That wasn't a political action at all.
So at our last meeting, we had spoken that we were going to continue with, if there was a book of interest to purchase the one copy for our library.
Yes.
The boycott system would not, at this point, affect the print copies of these popular...
Right.
That's correct.
Authors unless they...
Or audio.
Or audio.
Or audio.
Unless they change other aspects of how, I will call on you in a minute.
Okay.
So if this does become an issue, we can always choose to bump up the print copies, too.
Right.
If we decide as a board that this is something of import. Ms. Montgomery?
At the previous meeting, I made a motion that we would boycott and Marguerite tabled it. So we really have a motion on the table. So we really have a motion on the table.
Yeah. We can still discuss it.
Right, right. I just was afraid that we were going to come to a different conclusion without realizing we had a motion.
Yeah, well, a motion on the table is quite different from a motion that's been tabled, in my understanding. A motion that's been tabled is a motion that is not live anymore, until somebody passes, you know, passes a motion to take it off the table, which is the equivalent of moving it in the first place. So, our situation right now is as if we hadn't had the motion to begin with.
Uh, okay.
And just for, you know, fairness, an argument against boycotting that has been out there in the library world is that if we miss that eight-week window, then we don't get to have a co- and we decide we want it in the future, we cannot get a copy to keep in perpetuity. Because that's what that eight-week copy is, is a copy to keep in perpetuity. So.
Is there anything from this Reader's First that you'd like to point out, because they haven't had a chance, we just got it today?
Oh, yeah.
Is there anything in there that, that, um, you looked at the numbers, you looked at the analysis?
I did, I mean, I didn't do the math myself, I kind of, I took their numbers at face value. Um, and the point being made here is that the boycott is working. Um, people who are more math-minded than myself have done some, some estimations and some math, and they're saying that if Macmillan's goal is to increase profit, they're loo- they, if enough libraries boycott, they will lose enough profit that this move on their part to be more restrictive is not a profitable move for Macmillan. So they can hopefully go back to, uh, mode of, of doing business with libraries that they've done in the past.
That seems like a rather complicated calculation. Um, is, even if they lose buyers, what they're making more money on than ones they keep, it can be very difficult to, particularly when it's speculative about what the ultimate effect will be.
Well, it, it's interesting here, because on page two, it says, "According to Macmillan, eight percent of the four hundred readers who wanted the book would purchase it rather than wait."
Yes.
Which is, um, and, and the math here is that those eight people would go out and spend three hundred and thirty-six dollars, and in the end, what they're saying is, um, but the library wouldn't be purchasing those sixty-two other co- you know, if you read through this article. And, um, it does make some sense. Um, you know, I know they'll be talking about this at ALA. I'm leaving Thursday for ALA, and there's going to be a lot of talk about this. Um, Macmillan, of course, will be there.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's very possible that Macmillan will change the policy. I don't really know, knowing what, what's been going on. There's been a lot of bad press for them. This has not been good for Macmillan. Um, especially its authors, who had no idea what was going on. So, it's, you know, I think Liz and I, and Lydia, probably all of us are sort of, you know, it's, it's hard to know what to do as e- as librarians, um, so.
It seems to me like it's kind of a, a, this is, this is the first, this is, this is the first time it's happening. And the way that libraries react, in part, could shape what publishers do going forward.
Yeah.
And if there is a very, very strong backlash against it, then other publishers will pay attention. If Macmillan gets away with it, other publishers will pay attention. That's something to consider.
Um, so everybody, I would, um, Liz attended the membership meeting in my place last week. Um, there, so there's, um, just a very on-the-fence attitude, um, of the, that's the impression I've gotten from the directors in Minuteman.
Yes. It is going to be coming up as a discussion of serious top, a topic of serious discussion, should there be a network-wide boycott.
Yeah.
So.
If there's network-wide, then that even makes more of an impact.
Yeah.
There was a discussion in the, in the, in the readings that you gave us, it was a direct, uh, they said that it was different than what Macmillan said. They said that if a patient, if a patient, I'm just, I'm sorry. If a person went to get a book, an ebook from Macmillan, and it wasn't available, they just went for another ebook. They did not stop and go and buy that ebook. It was in, you know, they, they disputed what was said right away, and they said, "That's not true." And these were, these were small, done at local libraries, but more than one library said that that's what was done in the, in that reading that you gave to us. And that place in, and the one that was the most, uh, the reading that I, that I identified with the most was that woman from Washington State. And her population was, uh, seemed to be, uh, more nee- you know, lower income than us. And she said that, you know, her, her clientele, uh, her patrons didn't have the, the wherewithal to be able to go out to buy an ebook if they didn't have it. So she felt that, you know, if, if, um, if Macmillan was going to put these roadblocks in place for her patrons, then it, she wasn't going to stand by and let Macmillan do that. And so she said that she was not going to, uh, purchase her books from Macmillan. But she also had a toolkit in there to why she did it and what she did. And she had, um, in the toolkit, she had, uh, paperwork, uh, that she passed out to the patrons when they asked for ebooks from Macmillan. Why she wasn't doing it, why her and her, um, um, staff and their board decided not to go with Macmillan. And, um, if, if the network decided not to go with Macmillan, that would be a good tool, uh, to be able to look at, so that we could have something to give to the, um, patrons.
Yeah.
To said that, you know, w- we weren't doing it to be, um, as leverage for anything other than for the patrons. And also, they had, uh, formatted letters that this, that the patrons could write, sign to send to Macmillan themselves. So, that's another tool. Uh, I don't, I don't know how, how you would feel about, um, sending that off in the name of the library to give to, um, patrons, for them to sign from us, you know, if you think that that would be something good or not.
But I think if we voted for the boycott, how, that we would be responsible for doing that.
Right, well, absolutely, positively, but I mean, you would, you would, i- it's, it's good to have that in place, that the letter was very frank and very proactive, and, uh, but the letter that's being sent to Macmillan by the person, by a patron, you know, "Do you want to send this letter?" I mean, it, it had shades of, mm, and I just didn't like that too much. But the, um, I liked, I liked having that, um, sort of fact sheet.
Well, Ms. Montgomery?
Well, if you did that, you could put out the fact sheet, and then you don't have to have a pre-written letter. You could just say, "Here's the address." And that would not be-
Well, well, their le- their letter is a little bit different, because their clientele is different, but I mean, they, they were, they were, you couldn't send it out verbatim, but I mean, it's, it, it had good points.
Ms. Hall?
I'm only raising my hand, because I get the feeling that we haven't really reached a, a working conclusion. I'll just say, um, I like sticking with the approach we're using now. Uh, letting the very thoughtful analysis by library staff guide us on whether it's time to change or whether it isn't time to change. And, uh, these individual tactics, which would make more sense if we were pursuing a boycott, we wait on those until we actually decide we want to go with a boycott. The only cautionary note I would put in is, I would be wer- very wary of anybody who thinks they can forecast how this goes. Um, both because the, the economic bottles of substitution effects, like Marguerite was talking about, very, very hard to apply, even on more commodity-type goods than books are. And the other is, every day gives me another example of people who made a bad decision, and their reaction to finding that out was denial and digging in. You know? It, it's suicidal, it's irrational, and it's commonplace. And, and so, if Macmillan starts seeing evidence that, uh, that is adverse to their position, I think their first reaction will be to say, "Well, I, I'm not sure that's really happening," or, "Look at all these other factors, and it's, uh, you know, I, I think we made a good decision, we analyzed it well." And then, when it becomes impossible to ignore that, they'll say, "Well, we just haven't been tough enough." You know, "Our patrons need to learn, they're in a new century." And you've heard those kinds of posturings from other people on other products that aren't as close to our heart as books are. Uh, and my only takeaway from that is, let's do the things that make sense to us, and I think we are. But let's not imagine that we have a good handle on how this is going to go.
Yeah, I don't think we do.
Well, here's a factor, too, though, is that if a patron cannot get an ebook from the library, and they are so gung-ho about, "I need to read that book this week," where are they going to go to buy it if they definitely want the ebook? They're going to go to Amazon, which is Macmillan's competitor. Which is an, which is a factor that I think is definitely going to have an impact on Macmillan's bottom line during all of this. Just a fact, just a-
Right.
We also don't know how strongly, if they really want an ebook, as opposed to the others. I, I don't have a sense of people who like the ebook format so much that you couldn't dynamite them off in, into a print or audio.
Right, and I think a lot of people are comfortable reading different formats, unless they're under very specific, "No, I'm going to be on a plane for ten hours, I don't want to carry a book," you know? Um, I think a lot of patrons use the Libby Overdrive service as, "Well, if that's not available, I'll just limit down to what's available now." They, they don't know which publisher releases which book.
That's true.
They're just looking, mostly, people are just looking for something to read now. If they have to put their name on a hold list and just wait for that title, because they definitely want to read it, they're just going to go on to something else in the meantime.
Well, it's amazing how, how patient our patrons are, actually.
Yeah.
They will often wait six months for a book, um, you know, so.
Well, part of the reason that they're patient is because everybody has a list. You're not just waiting six months for one book to be ready. You have other things you're reading in the meantime, and then six months later, this one's ready, and you're waiting six months for something else. So-
Right.
The scenario of one patron needing this one book as an ebook, not print or audiobook, and needing only that book and needing it right now, and it happens to be published by Macmillan, it's, um, it's not impossible, but it's not something that is going to be affecting, uh, dozens of patrons on a daily basis.
Ms. Montgomery?
Although, everything you said is true, I also look at the, another principle that's very simple. It's just that if you give someone an inch, they take a mile. So, you know, you weigh that in there, too. And I'm so afraid that Macmillan will do this, and we're seeing this again, as you illustrated, all over the place, where an inch is taken, and then the mile is taken. Um, and especially in big business and in big financial things. So, we don't often get much of an opportunity to fight back against things, because we're all so small. And I think that if we made a stand, they're looking for people to make the stand with them. According to this, they need one in ten, and they're close to it. And if we do it, then maybe other people in the network will follow our example, because Dedham and Brookline. And then we might have the leverage. Whereas if we don't?
Yeah, I, I think you make good points there, very similar to the point Lydia made just a couple moments ago about if they succeed, we open the floodgates, and if they fail, we may stave off a whole range of bad things. But deciding whether now is the time to move, I think, hinges a great deal on Liz's analysis of how much are our patrons being affected by this? What's the size of the stake? Not only in terms of whether it causes us pain, but whether it causes them pain. And so, I, I, I settle back to the, I'm not saying no boycott ever, I'm saying, "Let's do what we've been doing." And, and keep getting these briefings, and if, uh, if Liz and the rest of the team say, "I, I sense the wind shifting here."
Well, I, I kind of got the impression that Liz really is for the boycott, although she may not say so in her particular position. But I got that feeling, and I got the same feeling last month's meeting. Um, I, I s- I just think that this is what people do, and if we, if we sit back too long, you know, it's like waiting and waiting and waiting, and the next thing you know, the government's changed. You know, I think you sit back too long, and you become ineffective, or you lose all control over the situation.
You want, you want a straw vote? See where the board is?
Well, I, I think that one thing to consider here is the fact that, at our last meeting, we did not take a stand in either direction. We left it at, to the discretion of our library staff, who makes the purchases. Um, I guess the thing that's going back and forth in my mind is that if we are not making the purchases, it is still being noticed that we are not making the purchases, but it still allows our staff to, should, for example, Leanne Moriarty come out with the, the next bestseller, that we could make the one purchase. But all of those other options that we've had for buying from Macmillan are still being felt as a bottom-line lack of purchase from Macmillan ebooks. I don't know, I, I guess I'm, I'm back and forth. A boycott can have a sign and a placard and an announcement, or a boycott can be something that's a quiter, "I'm choosing not to buy my coffee from X store." And if another of us choose not to buy it from X store, that particular store starts to feel it. Um, so that, I, I'm not taking a firm stand one way or another. Obviously, I'm still wrestling back and forth on this. In effect, we haven't purchased from Macmillan ebooks in a while. And I have to believe that that is being felt, regardless of whether we are ordering that we not purchase from Macmillan ebooks or we're just not purchasing from Macmillan ebooks. So that's what I would like to bring to the table for us to think about as a board. And, um, Ms. Hall, you had mentioned perhaps a straw vote? I, I don't know.
Before, before we take a straw, I'm interested to know, what would you like to do? You're closer to this.
Mm-hmm.
You've given more thought. What would you, what would you like this library to do?
So I've been part of the Digital Content Working Group for six years now, I think, roughly. And over that time, I've seen publishers testing the waters in different ways and changing their purchase models and lending models in little ways, like kind of chipping away, chipping away, so that fewer publishers are even providing an option to get a copy in perpetuity. So that means, once our set number of borrowers or set amount of time is used up, we have to pay, we have to basically buy the book again. So we're having- So we're having to repurchase huge chunks of our collection every couple of years, basically. And so I'm just seeing more...
Well, that's not nice, is it?
No! And so I kind of am of the mind that Lydia brought up earlier, like, a step too far, darn it. I think I've had enough now, and I'm going to say so. I'm in favor of a boycott, but I am not the voter.
What are you in favor of?
I thi... What did, um, do you have any idea if there was a time limit on Brookline or Denham's, how long their boycott?
I think the official wording of this is a two-year. And I'm not sure if they just signed on the exact same as everybody else, or if they just said until things change, I don't know.
Okay. Because that would make a difference to me of whether or not we, you know, how long is this going to be? When do we get to revisit this? I think making the statement on the short term. But, you know, if it's for five years, that's an awfully big step. If it's a short-term boycott, I think that, and who knows when we, you know, what that term should be. Ms. Montgomery.
I'm wondering, and John probably knows, if you join into a boycott, like, you're not going to sit on the bus anymore. When, so that's proclamation. But then eventually, if you start riding the bus again, because it's really hard walking to work, does that become another announcement, or is it just sort of a sliding back in? In other words, can we boycott and not say it's five years?
Well, that's what I think we need to decide, because it's either one or the other.
Well, I mean, if you still have access to the print copy.
Yeah, the print copy and the CD.
And the audio, yep.
Right, I mean, I say boycott.
Yeah, me too.
I get the sense, though, that they're testing the waters because with the ebooks, they can control that release. Once it's on audio, once it's a printed book, then it's very hard for them to get it back ever. And my fear is that this is just that step, okay, how's it going here? And if they make it happen and it slides through, then, okay, now we can start addressing the print copies. We can address the other copies as well, because we were able to do that with ebooks. And, you know, I'm, you know, last meeting, I was on the fence about it, you know, thinking of the patrons and that. But with what Liz said, with the fact that we don't order any, and the fact that we have so few requests for it, then I would say we'd almost have to boycott, just for the sense that we do, you know, stick that flag in and say, that's it. We're not going to take anymore. Otherwise, then it's almost as if like, oh, yeah, me too, because now everyone else is doing it.
Just the point is that we're not censoring. We are only eliminating one format book.
One format.
Right.
One format.
Yeah, but so we still buy the others.
Let me suggest, rather than make a motion, that we do vote to boycott, and we say revisit in six months. How's that sound?
I would like to wait until the ALA and see what the ALA has to say about this. Because I think after the ALA, there'll either be a massive boycott or Macmillan will fold.
Yeah, I'm not really, I'm not sure about that. I know that there will be a lot of talk about it, and there will be some forums that I'll be able to attend. But I'm, I think, I feel like there's a stalemate. I feel like a lot of the directors in Minuteman are, you know, and probably the boards, are feeling like we do. You know, do we really want to jump on this, or, you know, can we make a statement? Or do we just wait it out? And it's, you know, I think you're getting good advice from both Lydia and from Liz about how they feel, because they're so, you know, they're roots on the ground here in that.
I say boycott.
I say everybody's being timid.
I wonder if, oh, sorry. Mr. Hall.
I want to speak in favor of Sarah's framing of the issue. And what to put me in mind of is New Coke. When New Coke came out, there were a handful of people who very loudly boycotted it, and there were a lot more people who just didn't buy it. And that, if you're just not buying it, whether you're shouting it from the rooftops or just doing it and moving on, that shows up in the numbers they care about. So I think, to the extent that we have any leverage, we can exert it just as effectively by doing what we're doing, which is simply not buying the book. Or we might even decide not to buy anything in that format from that publisher, knowing that our patrons will still have access to the same books in other formats. I yield to no one in my desire to stick it to the man when the chance reveals itself. But when the anger cools, I try to think about what would be most effective and least harmful or disruptive to the people we do care about. So I'm still, you can call it timid, I think of it as measured.
Lydia.
To, I just want to confirm or clarify what you said, Liz. We, the fact that we have not purchased any of these Macmillan titles, if I understood you correctly, is not because we're sort of quietly unofficially boycotting or choosing who we buy our coffee from. The reason is because we don't have a lot of demand from this particular...
Purely statistics.
Correct. So, and so in that sense, we are, by the nature of the demand and what is offered by this particular publisher, it isn't really making a dent, and you kind of said this, but budget-wise, we're not talking about a huge impact in terms of what we spend or don't spend. So the leverage that we do have, therefore, would be the, for lack of a better word, symbolic gesture of adding our name to a list of libraries who are publicly taking a stand against it. And I just wanted to put out there sort of a scenario. Because it's come up a couple times, this Moriarty hypothetical. Might it be important to make a decision before?
That's right.
A Moriarty, because if Moriarty publishes a book, then we don't have a boycott as of now. And Liz is in a position where she does have to decide whether to buy X number of copies of Moriarty before the board meets again, and Liz can say, there's a Moriarty book coming out. Do we want to take a stand and say, here's our, here's our example, and we're going to, you know, go public about it? Or are we going to give Macmillan our money and, because suddenly the demand is there?
I also remember in the paperwork that you sent out...
May I have your attention, please? It is 8:30, and the library will be closing at 9 o'clock.
That Blackstone...
If you have any materials to check out, and you don't have a Minuteman library card, please come to the circulation desk at this time. No cards will be issued after 8:45. All public computers and printers will begin shutting down 10 minutes before closing. Please plan your work accordingly. Thank you.
I also remember reading in there that Blackstone is doing this as well.
Blackstone publishers.
Blackstone Audio also has an embargo, it's a shorter embargo. But then, once it's over, we can buy as many as we want and keep them forever, and it's the same price. There's not, and that's the other part of this, is that Macmillan has this tiered purchasing system now. And the metered access, like the Tier 2, when we could buy 10 copies of the LeAnn Moriarty book, it's at a very highly inflated price.
Yeah, there are many aspects to this that...
Also, Blackstone is very, very well circulating. So, but that's a good point, though, because Blackstone has kind of slipped through without a whole lot of public mud thrown at it, and it's interesting that it has. I agree with that.
Yeah, so that's the inch.
Well, Hachette came out with this, and another, was it Random House or Penguin? About five years ago, they came out and limited. What happens is after 26 circulations of the ebook, it disappears. And you have to buy another one, because they feel that 26 circulations of a physical copy is when the book is, it falls apart. And so a library has to buy another copy of it. So that's how they came up with this, and so, and that librarians were really upset about five, six years ago. And that sort of just kind of died down, and that's still in place, I believe.
Oh, more publishers are doing that now than they used to.
Yeah, and more publishers are.
Yeah.
So... Mr. Hall.
Two things. First of all, I think the Moriarty hypothetical is a perfect title for a new Sherlock Holmes. Secondly, I think you made a good point that, for all our sakes, it would be good to have thought through what we do if and when she comes out with a new book. My recommendation would be, try to direct the patrons who want that to one of the other formats, and see what kind of pushback you get. And only then contemplate buying it or announcing a boycott.
Well, Hank Philippi Ryan also is, and she's local, and she may, I don't know, do you know if she's coming out with anything new?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Yeah.
I would know because she sends me emails when she is.
I think she just did.
Yeah, and I think she's a, I've seen her speak and things, I think she's kind of a receptive person. It might not be a bad idea for Liz or somebody to just write her a letter and say, do you know about this, and what do you think?
Well, she does know about it now.
Right, but you know what I'm saying is...
She's a trustee.
Yeah.
And they did, um, they took a while, yeah.
She voted to boycott, she's on the board, she voted to boycott.
Good.
They did take a couple meetings, though, in order to get their official boycott in place, which we're doing right now, too, so I think, yeah.
Let me underline what Liz just said. One of the affected authors has voted to boycott her own publisher.
Yes, for ebooks, yes.
Yes.
Now, that's leverage.
So let's join her.
In terms of what Mr. Hall said with regard to directing patrons, to what extent as reference librarian would you have the opportunity to do that?
I don't think that's practical. Because there's so many different people who sit on the desk, for one thing. And then, again, yep, a lot of people are discovering it online themselves.
Especially ebooks.
And when I go into, like, look at who has requested that we purchase it, do I then send out a message to every single person who requests that we purchase it?
Gee, when you put it that way, it doesn't sound like a good idea.
It's the, that's the both of it, yeah.
Do you have a lot of people requesting the same thing that you don't already have? Or, I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, that's how, that drives a lot of our purchasing decisions, is titles that patrons all over Minuteman have recommended.
Well, I know just one, but you said a lot of people requesting it. So I was just wondering if, you know...
It could be. It could be, you know, my uncle wrote this book, I think you should have it, one person referenced it. Or it could be, ooh, I get Hank Philippi Ryan's emails, and I know she's got a new one coming out, you should buy it. And then we get like 10 people saying, you should buy it. And there's a form on the Overdrive site where you can submit titles for purchase.
It does like the Minuteman print. So, it's eight, we can buy.
We've had a lot of discussion, and we still have a lot of things on the agenda this evening.
We can move on to the next item of the agenda, too.
Shall we try a vote?
That is up to the board.
I make a motion to boycott.
Second.
All in favor? Now we have a split board.
Motions fail on a tie-up, under Robert's rules.
This does not mean we cannot revisit.
Possibly at every board meeting.
Yes, so make sure that it goes into old business.
I definitely want, we will keep it on old business. Like Ms. Cummings, I am interested to hear what comes out of ALA.
And out of...
And I think that that will have a richness of information that could very potentially change the outcome of the vote in the future.
Well, there are more and more things that I'm forwarding to you, you know, practically, so.
We appreciate those.
And I'll keep forwarding all of that.
I know that some directors are meeting with Macmillan, and Sarah is kind of spearheading that, I don't know.
Okay, good, that's good to know.
Okay, so keep this on old business. Grandfather clock repair, anything?
No, we have not heard from, and I'm assuming that when he gets to it, he will get to it. I will give him a call, though, just to find out, but we expected this to be a lengthy process, so. For as long as it was sick, I think in the end, when we get it back, it will be great, so. But I'll give him a call and find out where he is on it, because it's been a couple months.
Okay. Anything new on the townwide facilities update?
Well, the townwide facilities update is definitely happening. They are, as far as I know, Paul Ricardi will be the, will head the facilities department. They, here it is. Don't get fired without that, will you?
And for those who don't know, Paul is the longtime facilities manager for the school system.
Right. And I asked some questions at the last department head meeting, not today, but another. And there will be no personnel changes, but very possibly our budget, the facilities part of the budget, which would be utilities and various other parts of the incidentals budget, would be removed from our budget. And I asked them to please let me know for sure, because we do need to contact the MBLC about that. And then they just adjust our MAR, our municipal appropriation requirement for next year. So as the budget is being put together, I'll find out more. But I will be putting those items in our budget request. They just probably would get taken out, as far as I understand, at the beginning of the fiscal year. But I don't anticipate any problems with the MBLC about that. Because of the libraries in other towns have been doing this, and this is the process that we go through. So our budget would decrease somewhat significantly by several, probably, oh, I don't know, well over $100,000, $150,000.
Okay. Noise in the library, teen behavior.
I have not had any incident reports about teen behavior. More noise in the library, I think the Children's Department has a really good handle on it.
Very good. Directors' evaluation and contract. As you are aware, this is, this takes place in open session. For purposes of this evening and reviewing over the fact that Charlotte's contract actually runs through the end of June, we are going to focus on the directors' evaluation this evening. And in order to discuss contractual matters, we need to go into executive session. So I think that it would be most effective for our time as a board to visit that after we've had a staff association negotiation meeting, that we're already going into executive session, and make good use of our extra time on the board. Because again, her contract continues on through the 30th of June 2020. So if we revisit that at either the March or April timeframe, we will have enough time for us to consult with town council and anything else.
I signed the final copy in May, three years ago, so, yeah, there's plenty of time.
So at this point, we will send one copy down to Charlotte for review. I have copies for each side of the table to share together. Because again, this is a personal evaluation. One copy will be filed with HR to stay as part of Charlotte's permanent personal file for HR. One copy will be kept with Charlotte, and the other copies will be shredded.
Do you think that way?
Because again, this is a personnel file item. Our personnel subcommittee met last week. We took all of the scores. We averaged all of the scores on each of the items from the director's evaluation. And overall, I would say that we have a, a very excellent set of scores here across the board on each of the different points throughout Charlotte's evaluation. Most of the ratings were at least in the very good category. Some of them were in the excellent category. At the end of the evaluation, we have also included some prose that is part of the official evaluation and I would like to read that out loud for the sake of our viewers at home as well as for the board as a whole, that pulling in all the pieces from everyone's different evaluations, we as the Board of Trustees encourage you to continue to give us timely reports and appreciate that you keep us informed of issues and challenges within our library. Similarly, we ask for continued updates on our library's interactions with other departments, boards, towns, and organizations on both, and I'm gonna have to edit this a little bit. Apparently, I wrote too quickly this afternoon, on the local, state, and national levels. As a relatively new board, we feel that you're continuing to take the time to explain aspects of budget, staffing, departments, programming, and facility decisions will help us all grow in our understanding through this next year of your directorship and have us all well-prepared for the transition to follow. So obviously, I need to make some edits in this prose. I was having trouble with my printer at home as well, so I wasn't able to print it out and go through it. I would like each of us to sign this evaluation. So I will have two copies made available in Charlotte's office for us to come in so that we have an official signed copy for Charlotte's records and for Molly Keane in the HR department of the town.
Good.
Do you want us to go into Charlotte's office to sign this, or you want us to just sign one now?
See, that's the funny thing is I'm seeing that I have typos as I'm reading through this out loud. And so, I, mea culpa. I do apologize. There are a couple.
There are just two, Sarah. We ask for continued updates and on, on the local, state, and national levels. I think, you know, I think that's fine unless you want to come in and bring corrected copies. That's fine with me. Um, we can leave them with Casey though.
How do you guys feel as a board? I personally am embarrassed as I'm reading through this.
Why don't you just cross out what you're not happy with and initial it, like you do with the bank, and then we all sign it.
Are you comfortable with that, Charlotte?
This will be on, this will be on two copies.
This will be on two copies.
Here's another one.
Yeah, and on public TV too, for that matter.
Then we know it's just two.
Yeah, that makes it really real.
It's not as if you don't have 400 things to do every minute of the day.
She's got children. She has more than that.
And Casey will send what, that signed copy over to Molly?
Yeah, good thanks.
It looked really good at home.
It looks good here. Don't worry.
It's fine.
Double checking our date here. One copy circulated that side.
Casey's going to town over there on her brand-new laptop.
Sorry, I'm out of paper.
No, no, it's, it's great.
So while that's happening, this might even.
While that's happening, we can continue on, um, personnel report.
Nothing to report.
Friends of the library, Ms. Cummings.
I haven't been to a meeting yet. I'll be starting, uh, in February. I got a very nice letter from Dan and welcome to me, so.
Very good.
Be starting, uh, with Lydia next, in two weeks.
I don't think there's been, has there been a, a meeting since?
There hasn't been a meeting yet.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, um, it's the 12th, I believe, is the next one.
Yes.
Um, and I'll attend that as well. And, um, yeah, nothing, nothing else to report.
So at the next meeting, you won't be able to update us either, 'cause our meeting is the 11th?
Well, that's okay.
We will look forward to an update as soon as we get one. There'll be a lot to update.
We allow anticipation to build.
Okay.
See what the friends think of boycotts.
MML statistical trends, 2019.
Did anybody have any, um, comments on our statistical trends for the year? Um, I didn't write up, um, I was busy doing the budget update, uh, which was pretty involved. So, um, we just, we got our statistics in, I believe, the day I was, or the day before I was getting ready to, to leave. So, um, I just wanted to make sure that it got out to you, so you could take a look at it. I think we're doing, um, very well. Some of the things that you'll notice are the fact that our print, uh, circulation is down. And, um, but it's good to know that our electronic circulation is up. Other things that, the, the self-checkouts, that's just been terrific now that we have children's, um, on this, with the self-checkout. We had an anomaly, if, if you really study this report, one of the, one of it, uh, it was because, um, we had, um, our self-checkouts were down. Uh, the, the actual one self-checkout that we had was, um, under the weather and was, was gone for a, a month or two. So, but it's very apparent, and that was in July of, um, 2017. It's just very apparent that people are getting used to doing that on their own and they're getting more comfortable about it. A lot of people love going to the circulation desk and talking to the circulation staff, which is why we're here. They want information or they just want to say hi, just be friendly. But there are people, you know, I have a husband who wants to go in, pick up his book and get out without, um, you know, without any fanfare, and, and there are a lot of people like that. And so our self-checkouts are continuing to increase. Of course, our, if you look at those bottom lines, our Overdrive books are continuing to accre, increase, those, um, streaming downloads, our Library of Things. We haven't seen anything dramatic in Norwood patrons going to Westwood ever since that time when Westwood opened and we had a lot of people going over there and now that doesn't seem to be happening. I think our Sunday circulation, um, it, what, in 2019, it was the highest ever, which is good. Sunday circulation is tough. It's, it's a beautiful day. They're not coming to the library and if, you know, so.
Well, I had to come here when, when, oh, a few weeks ago on a Sunday and I had to be here right away 'cause I had other things I had to do. I couldn't believe that there were people lined up at the door at 2:00 on a cold, awful Sunday, waiting to come in.
And what's interesting is, you know, the statistics that we used to rely on were, and this is the statistic that you see, is checkouts on a, on a Sunday. And that's not all the reason that people are coming to the library. It's not just to pick up their books. They're coming to play with their children. They're coming to, um, get the access to wifi, work on the computers. So, um, there's, there's much more to it than that.
Do you have a, a door checker?
We do. Our attendance actually, um, we now have, um, Brian's put in some better, um, uh, people, they're called people counters. The best would be something that was on the ceiling that could count each person as it went by. Because what happens with a mother with two toddlers hanging on and a stroller, she comes through that people counter and it only really, um, counts as one. So, um, so that's not really exact. It would be great if we, if we could be exact, but we can't. So we, we haven't seen, um, a huge increase in, um, interact, in what's called visits. Um, that number pretty much stays kind of the same. So, um, anyway, and our desk interaction, our reference and desk interactions are now, you know, Lydia has those, is getting a better and better handle. She wants to be perfect. She wants to know exactly what's happening at every single desk, every patron, but you know, um, that's probably never gonna happen, but we're getting closer and closer to that.
Well, Kate Sheehan reported, uh, today that, um, I asked her how the weekend went and she said that, um, on Saturday, the library was crazy. It was so busy. Children's circulation desk, it was so, so busy all day, people anticipating the snow coming. And, um, and she noted, "And we made sure to gimlet everything." Gimlet is this statistical tracking tool. So they want, I think the staff understands. They, they know that it's important to track what they're doing so we can show our, our trends, our, um, our peak times and, uh, and, and use it for strategic planning purposes.
Excellent. Thank you. So all of, all of our streaming downloads are, one thing that is interesting is public PC use. It's remained pretty much the same and that's because everybody, more and more people are coming with their own devices because they can afford them or they're just coming in with their phones. Um, our passport applications were way up. Our notarized documents are up. Fax documents, we have a good handle on that now because Brian's been able to figure out how to, how to count those this year. So, um, we're waiting to find out how many tax forms we print this year because of course, um, you know, the state and federal government are relying on libraries now. And that has already started, um, too many drones from, from the reference staff because it's, it's really a cumbersome, um, season for them. So, we're in, in our programs, you know, all the numbers are just great. I know it's a little overwhelming to look at, you know, all of this and there's really no better way to do it. Um, we would like at some point, I think, to come up with some graphics for you, which we will do, um, at some point. I think Lydia and I need to get together on that, um, with Carla. And, um, so that you can actually see some of our, um, some of our progress in, uh, but I think we're doing, just, the staff is just amazing. They're good habits as libraries, so. Yes, and they need compliments. Because they don't really, you know, they do get them from the patrons, but I think it's important that they get them from their peers and from the trustees and from people in town that, um, don't normally think to compliment the staff on their, this terrific work.
I thought the Christmas tree was incredible.
Yeah, it was beautiful, um, this year. I mean, it's always beautiful. It's always a little bit different. And that will be coming down, I believe, before Valentine's Day, so.
I noticed in the stuff you sent out, you had a picture of the Christmas tree and you had, and you had that card that you sent to people.
That was outreach.
Yes, and I thought that it might be a really nice thing if at the bottom they were invited to the Christmas tree lighting.
Oh, well, we did.
Those are for people that can't come out. Those are, that, that was for people that can't come to the library.
The picture, yeah.
Right, but could someone bring them, like they, you know, I mean.
Yeah, that's, well, we are gonna do, uh, it, this year we did an impromptu, um, lighting, um, that was on, and they came, uh, you had a video on, we, and, um, Norwood Community Media didn't come, but, but, um, the library posted a video of it. Next year, we're gonna make it into a bigger event, 'cause it was very impromptu. We thought of it in about, for, in a few days. But that would be a good idea to try and maybe see.
Well, they have the bus. They might be able to work something that way.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, it's something to really think about, inviting, um, groups, maybe inviting some kids from school to sing or something like that. So, yeah, we will definitely think about that.
Did you take down the, the, uh, Christmas tree in books, the, the one made up?
Not yet. No. The one on the second floor.
That's the one I was talking about.
Yeah, no, that will stay up. Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, the lighting of that.
I thought it was, I just locked it.
Yeah, I think it was the fifth year, was it? Fifth or sixth?
Sixth year, first lighting.
Yeah, first light and ceremony.
The books sell, the books that didn't sell, or?
Nope, they, you see all the empty, empty.
Yeah, they're stored red and green, old Reader's Guide to Paragraph literature and large index books that were withdrawn, but, um, but we, we set them aside knowing that we need them every year for the, the tree.
And so when are you gonna take it down?
I think we'll be taking it down before Valentine's Day. One year, stayed up a little too long, but, um, and that really is Kate, uh, Sheehan and Irene Godovich who, who put that together, um, with some encouragement by the staff. So.
Well, very good display.
Okay, so that's the statistics.
Yep. New business library fines. Well, we've been revisiting aspects of this.
I've been continuing to send you, I'm, I'm thinking that I'll find out a little bit more from ALA because of course, ALA passed the resolution last year, which was to, um, you know, reduce or do away with fines altogether. I think it's something that we should think about doing first in the, for the children's, for children's materials and then move, um, on from there, so we'll keep that on. Um, I'll keep that in old business.
Very good.
Can I ask one question about the fines? Does that include lost books?
No.
Okay.
No, it doesn't include lost books and it won't include, um, some other fees.
Okay.
It will just, it would just be library fines, which of course, you know, are only a nickel a day for books.
Right, yeah.
Um, but it does add up. Our library fines last year.
Yeah, they were a thousand, they were a thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah, it was, um.
It would be interesting to see how the automatic renewal impacts, um, that conversation.
Right. Minuteman Triple I has, um, started automatic renewals. It started January 1st, um, which means that if you have a book, if you have books out, they will be automatically renewed two days before. I believe it's two days before.
Unless there's a.
Unless there's a hold, um, right, but a whole slew of children's books, as you know. Twenty children's books will automatically renew.
The fines of $5,600, is that, that's not just from late fees? It's from late fees?
The other one is lost books.
The, yeah, the lost books, but the $5,600, that's not from like, uh, the holds? Holds up, isn't included in that?
We don't charge for non-picked-up hold, the holds that are picked up, not picked up anymore. No, we don't. Um, there are some, various, uh, $5 for, um, a museum pass that comes back late would be a fee that would be in, um, in that fines.
In that fines, yeah.
But the majority of that is overdue fines. So, we would be looking at less money.
It'd be about $10,000.
Uh, at the most, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm wondering about, um, voluntary fines. You know how in the tax bill now, and you probably don't get one, but it's, you know, you pay your property tax and then you can donate. And I always fuss at them about my property tax at this time. And it's just on the store. It's like nothing, right? But I easily part with a good couple of hundred bucks every time for the voluntary fund. I don't know why brains work that way. And I wonder if there could be a thing where, you know, you don't have to pay your fine, but if you wanna pay a fine, here you go, some method of doing that.
Something to think about. I mean, I can ask what other libraries may have done about it. You know, there are a lot of people who owe five cents and they ask at the front desk and somebody gives them five, and that person gives the library $5.
Oh, yeah.
There are a lot of people who are really generous. It's like, five cents? You've gotta be kidding me. We love the library. And they, they hand over a dollar or five.
Yeah, don't give me any change, just keep it.
Right, is that right, Joanne?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we put it in the friends. We say, "Oh, okay, we'll put it in the friends."
Yeah, so, um, you know, it's, it's really something that we need to keep thinking about. Um, 'cause we are, they are moving, more and more big library systems are eliminating fines altogether. I really think that we start with children's fines. Of course, we have exempt employees. Several of us here are exempt already. We, we don't have fines because anybody over the age of 60 doesn't have fines, so, in Norwood, so. And, and actually, those are the people who usually bring their books back on time anyway, so. I mean, it, that's just a statistic that happens.
Mr. Hall.
Don't we have, or haven't we had, where you could weigh your fines if you make a donation to the food pantry? And we've got the collection bins and as a participant with the food pantry, I think that's cool and.
Yep, and we do do that. And what's interesting is the fines don't go down that much in November. It's not like they're total, which is Food for Fines Month. We still see, um, fines coming, you know, people still paying their fines. So I think that it's just something we need to keep studying and, and maybe have Kate come to the meeting when we discuss it, um, at another month.
Okay.
Really find out, um, how we wanna go about this.
Sounds like a plan. Search warrants. Were there any search?
Two quick items of new business. Kate, you mentioned Kate, uh, is, uh, ramping up on the annual pajama drive. Kate, you mentioned Kate is ramping up on the annual pajama drive, which kicks off February first. I'm mentioning this now in part so that our viewing audience will know that we're eager for them to donate new unused pajamas, starting February first and running through the middle of March. We have a fairly ambitious target this year of twenty-six hundred pairs, which is not that far from what we got last year.
Yeah, I think it was around that.
Around, yeah, and the, the competition with Born is, is not being emphasized as much, but it's still there. They were the ones who beat us out for top place. Kate Tagg is, is the one who's coordinating everything. Already started lining up some other groups that will organize drives, and I think the, Tony Mizuko is going to have collection bins at every department building.
Yeah, DPW has already started making those.
Yeah.
Mark Ryan's been great about that. And the schools are all getting involved, St. Catherine's is getting involved this year.
And this is all very promising. We're, we're still interested in other groups that might be interested in participating that, I referenced that the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts was made in one conversation I had, different fraternal organizations, at least one's been contacted, there are others that I think will be contacted. So it's an exciting time of the year, we, I may get my attic back. And so anybody who, who sees these proceedings and thinks that sounds interesting, but wants more information, Kate Tagg is the person to talk to.
Thank you.
And she's looking for volunteers to help pack up the pajamas, because it's a time-consuming, and we need to send them off on a daily basis.
And she was, she and I were talking about particularly Thursdays and Fridays, if people have time, midday. The, the other new business item, much shorter, on Sunday, February the twenty-third, Tony Mizuko has a, a meeting at one thirty-seven Manhattan Street, which I think is one of the town buildings.
I think it's the Public Safety Building.
Okay. Yes, that makes sense. This is to gather suggestions for the hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Norwood, which is coming up fast, only two years off. I think there's a tremendous amount of unique institutional memory here in the library about Norwood's past and creativity to come up with ways to infuse that into the celebration that many other excellent people they're recruiting to be part of this would not think of. So I'm hoping the, the library will participate in different ways, and I, again, I hope the people who are watching this, who think that sounds really cool, will get in touch with Tom Maloney Selectman, who is currently heading up the effort.
Thank you.
Okay. And now.
There were no search warrants.
No search warrants, excellent. Miscellaneous advisories?
No, none can speak of.
Staff public remarks. Anything remarkable? No. Trustees' remarks. Again, we're kind of hoping for brief remarks this.
As Marguerite said last time, we all read.
We all read. If that satisfies the population? You look like you really, really.
No, no, I have an eye on the clock, too, so I can always bring in my book next time.
Okay.
Did you want, you look like you wanted to say something, you look.
No, that's a good idea. I'd say that's a good idea.
What I am going to request is that, for the sake of our own benefit as a board, that we each send at least one of the books that we would recommend into Charlotte, so that we can have it as part of our packet next time, to see what other people have been reading for the last two months that we've skipped over book suggestions.
Okay, I'll send an email tomorrow morning with any updated information, ask, requesting everyone to send me.
Because I do like to peruse that little sheet at the end.
You want my list?
You want, you want the actual book or the name?
The book.
The book.
I mean, no, I don't want the book, I want the name and author, otherwise, yeah.
She's gonna get a list like this.
Yeah, my, my list is definitely growing, so that'll be fun. That'll be fun to look over. Okay, so we are on to the thirteenth item on our agenda.
Move adjourned?
A motion to adjourn.
Some moved. Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we will look forward to hearing from ALA, and we will see everyone on February eleven.